Okay, we'll try that again. Welcome, everybody, to our Monday, March 22th Camas School Board meeting. I am going to do a roll call vote for attendance to get started. Connie Hennessy.
Here.
Doug Quinn.
Here.
He's fair enough. Erica Cox.
Here.
Cory McHenry.
Here.
And I am also here. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is led by Doug Quinn. Thank you, Doug. I will be doing the land acknowledgement this evening. I acknowledge that the geographical region of Camas is located on the ancestral and territorial lands of the Chinook and Kalaits people, and that the Chinook are still fighting to be federally recognized tribe on their own land. With that, we will move to item three of our agenda, the Milltown Pride Awards.
Thank you, Tracy. I have two Milltown Pride Awards to give tonight and two really humble staff members that probably are uncomfortable with being recognized in this way, and also indicative of the teams that they're a part of, just kind of the servant part of. Our whole district is a servant focused, obviously, but these guys often are behind the scenes. And so our first award is to Mr. Adam Green. And Adam Green, you could give this award to our tech, and we did over the summer, to our technology just for the employment of Chromebooks and all the troubleshooting that they've done over this past year of moving through remote learning. In particular, Adam, we wanted to recognize him this time because our website crashed about a week or so ago. And Adam, just as one of those brilliant, brilliant guys that just can see problems from all different angles. And every time I get to work with them, I'm inspired through that. And he just did yeoman's work to make sure that this was going to be up and running. And, and just a credit to him, and I know that he represents a lot of other great staff members. But Adam Green, I want to congratulate you with the Milltown Pride Award. So we just recognized Adam. And the next person that I want to recognize is Mr. Jake Howland. Jake is a teacher at Camas High School, and he's also our athletic trainer. And he runs a group of student athletic trainers. And if you've ever been to any of our events, you've seen Jake. And sometimes he had a really long beard, and I noticed that it's a little shorter now. I don't even know if you have a beard with a mask on. But Jake is one of those people that's at every single event or his staff. His students are there, and they're supporting things whenever a kid gets injured or just like helping. And you go to an event and you're often watching the gym floor or the football field, then you're not necessarily watching the sidelines. And Jake is there before, he's there after, and he just does it because he loves to support kids and loves the events. And recently, he's also stepped up into the world of contact tracing and really helped us along with some other great individuals, Joan Halgar, Luanne Miller, Rory Oster, Carol Bruce. There's all kinds of people that we're having all these conversations with our families, trying to help them understand what it means to contact trace and how do we do that? And so in addition to all that, it's actually Athletic Trainer Month, too. And it just seemed like it was the perfect time to bring in Jake. And, you know, to his credit, when we emailed him, he's like, yeah, what about everybody else? And, you know, I think you represent everybody else. And we've also already done the nurses and health of staff assistance earlier and just thought it was a great opportunity to really just call you out, Jake, and just say how much we appreciate what you do and how much we see it. And even though it's not necessarily the scoreboard highlight, we know that you're there and you're supporting everything that we do. So congratulations, Jake.
Okay, thank you again to Adam and Jake for being our Milltown Pride winners this board meeting. Next item I will move down to is board communication. And I'm going to just start our board communication with superintendent search update. So to keep our community up to date during this process, we want, we're going to have a spot on our agenda designated each time we have a meeting to let you know what's happening. This past week, we reviewed the community feedback, and we've individually met with community leaders, cabinet administration and staff. And thank you to everybody who participated in the thought exchange and for giving us valuable feedback on the characteristics and traits that you deem important when we move forward with this next step. As of today, we have come to no decision, and we acknowledge the gravity of this determination and the time it takes to get it right. We've heard from the community the value of this position. In order to take the next step, it will take time for evaluation as we refine our path forward. We do plan to meet again today, an executive session after this, where possible action could be taken. And once again, when decisions have been made, we will not wait for board meetings to update the community, but we will do so using the website, social media, and Parent Square to make sure everyone is informed moving forward. And with that, I will move down to the rest of my board members for communication. Connie, do you want to start?
Sure, I don't have much to add. We, we were in executive session during the last budget meeting. So none of us have an update on that. And CEF auction, I heard, was a raging success. I know all the work that people have put into that, and I would just say thank you on behalf of our kids.
Good, no echo, thank you. Lots of conversations this week with staff and folks related to the process we're going through with the superintendent and trying to just come up to speed on a lot of the issues that are of interest and critical to staff right now. And then, of course, the CEF auction. That was, that was fun. It was a pleasure to support such an amazing group of people. I'm very, I was always very impressed with who they, who they are, how they do their work, and the enthusiasm they bring to the system of educating our childrens. That's really all.
Okay, well, just to echo what you all said, just the last two weeks since we've last met, we've been talking with teachers and administrators and community members about the qualities and qualifications they want to see in our next superintendent. So thank you for that. And we've continued conversations with staff that we do every month and recently talked about what the future of Camas Connected Academy will look like and how it'll serve students. And it's just really exciting, the options we're creating for students and the choices in optimizing learning for different types of learners in our district. And, and I as well attended the Camas Educational Foundation fundraiser. And thanks Doug and Tracy for being MCs. I could have watched another half hour of the Doug and Tracy sitcom show. That was fun. And just two thumbs up on that. And so, great job. And hopefully CEF raised funds for the amazing grants that they provide to students and staff for those extraordinary learning opportunities that we give our, our Camas students. And thanks for all of the volunteers that, that are part of that organization. Thank you. Um, two weeks ago, I mentioned at the last board meeting that through my employer, I attended a seminar discussion on racism, hate and violence towards the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities that has been happening, especially during the pandemic. And then this last week, the horrific tragedy happened in Atlanta. When we talk about these current events with our students and we protect one another and we give space to listening to other experiences that aren't our own. And from those, we grow into better learners and empathetic leaders and cultivators of inclusiveness. So Dr. Snell sent out an email on Friday, and thank you for sharing that with our families, Dr. Snell, because addressing events and allowing space to have conversations in our classrooms allows opportunities to share and listen. And last week, the anti-Asian hate crimes in Atlanta and San Francisco and New York just can't be ignored. So that in our community, we continue to support one another and we step up to the responsibility we have in calling out injustice and racism. Oh, and tonight with an acknowledgement that our state reps and state senator are having a town hall at 6:30 PM and to give an update on their activities. And I'm sorry, we're missing that opportunity here from them. So I wouldn't blame any of you who are on our call tonight if you wanted to hop off and join theirs at 6:30. I did send out emails letting them know of our conflict and timing tonight and shared with them that funding during this tumultuous time is at the top of our concerns and that the state backfill of federal relief funding is really needed to address the inequities of the federal relief funding to Camas. We're just not receiving the same amount of funding per student in comparison to our neighbors in southwest Washington. So we're asking our legislators to support House Bill 1476 and its ability to address the need for balance in relief funding. And we'll continue to reach out to our elected officials on behalf of Camas students and teachers and have invited them to attend future board meetings. Where, and hopefully we'll be able to, when we can conduct more in-person meetings, look forward to updating them in person on how we've weathered and lessons learned and support we need from our state, like broadband and funding. So, and that's it for me. Thanks.
All right. Well, so much of what, so much of what Erica said, I, you stole my thunder a little bit, but that's okay. I do want to just, I want to tag on really quick about the, the Camas Connect Academy. And one of the things that I did last week is I was able to be our board rep and sit in on an interview process for principal for, for CCA for next year. And I don't think we have anything ready to announce yet, but I, I'm just really, I was really heartened to see that we are putting, we are putting resources behind making CCA and making remote learning for those who want it a priority. And it's just a great example of our forward thinking, knowing that as we get back to quote unquote "normal", we won't actually get back to quote unquote "normal". And so I'm just, I'm happy to see that the, the direction that we're taking is investing in, in technology and in being innovative with our, with our education and giving students more options. Because I think if there's one thing we can all agree on, it's that more options is always, is always a good thing when it comes to education. Without, I don't want to, I don't want to even attempt to, to, to echo anything else or add on to what Erica said because I couldn't agree anymore. So thank you for being so eloquent in your words that way, Director Cox.
Thank you all for those updates. You steal all my thunder, so now I'm out of things to say. But the CEF auction was great, and I did email our elected officials today, too, about that House bill as well. So I know they're on their meeting right now. Okay, so next we will move on to public comment. And at first, we do have three public comments that were submitted, and Jeff will read those. But first, I want to make sure there's nobody in this room that wants to do public comment. No public comment. And I would also invite people that we are open for public comment. So if you would like to come speak instead of emailing them, that's always welcome as well for the time being. But for right now, Jeff will read those for us.
Hi, I'm writing in to thank you for finally getting our children into in-person instruction. My high schoolers were very excited to go to in-person school today. I've heard from so many friends and community members, how their kids have said they feel more like themselves, that they feel happier, is bringing a glimpse of life back to their, to normal for these teens. I've also talked to many high schoolers that said they aren't even bothering to go back because it is only two days a week and it doesn't make sense to go that little. I've also talked to high schoolers that said they're afraid to go back because they don't think they can get as good a grades in person. They've literally had teachers tell them that it's going to be harder in person and that staying home will be easier. That right there is absolutely uncalled for. And unfair, teens need to be around others for so many reasons. Teachers need to be advocating for our students. Now that the CDC guidelines say that three feet is good for social distancing, I would hope to see the school board members making it a priority to get these kids into four days a week school, not just elementary kids, high school kids, they deserve it. They are a year behind. I talked to a high school teacher this weekend that said the kids who often presume only aren't even showing up now. Please do what is best for our high schoolers. As school board members, I'd love to see you calling other school districts that have had kids in school since August. Get ideas from them. I have a friend in Utah that said their school isn't even doing soft closures anymore. If they get to that point, having a certain number of COVID cases in school, the parents voted to do a thing called test to stay, where the kids literally have a rapid test at school, and if negative, they can stay. We are so behind what others are doing in the nation, please start reaching out to other schools to get our kids full time. Thank you for your time, Jennifer Barnes. To whom it may concern, now that the CDC six-foot distancing policy has been amended to three feet, will Camas secondary students be returning to full-time in-person learning? As previously stated in Superintendent Snell's report dated Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, secondary schools, secondary students will be limited to two days until the six-foot distancing requirement is amended. I'm hopeful that the new guidance will expedite an updated return policy, allowing for more in-person learning as stated in the superintendent's report. Thank you for your continuing concern for well-being of our students. M Wagner, parent. To the Camas School Board, I'd like to advocate for two points today. The first is for the school board to lead the way in following the CDC recommendations regarding social distancing needing, needed in schools. As I listened to the last school board meeting on March 8th, I was disappointed to hear several board members reference waiting for our local health department and/or OSPI to give the guidance. As of last week, neither have moved forward with the three-foot distancing versus the six-foot distancing despite the CDC recommending otherwise. I urge the Camas School Board to follow the newest CDC guidelines, which I believe will greatly benefit all students, especially in the secondary levels. The new three-foot guideline will allow a greater number of students on campus at once as well as hopefully increase their in-class instruction from just two days a week. The second point I would like to advocate for is the district's equity website being reviewed by the school board members for approval and/or change. It is my understanding that the entire website has been put together by members of the Equity Committee, which includes both Assistant Superintendent Dr. Charlene Williams and Lisa. I think it is a great resource for families and community members, but I do not agree with the socioeconomic status section where it states our staff is learning to educate through the lens of critical race theory, which acknowledges that race is socially constructed and have real tangible effects on people. Critical race theory allows for diverse individuals, whether class, gender, race, nation, or sexual orientation space to share their experiences. These inequities emerge from socioeconomic and legal differences maintained by the white population interests. Additionally, we are shifting beliefs away from the idea of meritocracy, of viewing which power and privilege would be allocated by individual merit and not by social origin. Even though there are several disclosures stating that everything on the website may not reflect the district stance, this entire paragraph quoted here is a clear statement pertaining to the Camas School District Attorney's direction. If this is not the case, I urge the Camas School Board to track the equity site to be changed to have the critical race theory statements removed.
Thank you, Jeff, for reading those public comments. Next, we will move on to item six. Did you guys all see the items added to the consent agenda? And if so, then I will look for a motion to approve the.
Second.
That was.
Oops, that was Doug and Cory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Gil, Connie? Doug?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, that moves us down to item number eight, our reopening plan.
Thank you, Tracy. I will go through the first slides very quickly as they're our standard slides that we always have in our presentation. So this is the timeline, the last benchmark that we had was the March 1st required update to our plan by our state OSPI agency. Go ahead. These are the guiding principles that have directed the decision-making throughout this transition over the course of the year and decision-making rationale that you've had. Some of the definitions, we started most of the year in small group, and now we've been landing more in the hybrid and in-person realm, which is great. And this is from the Department of Health guidance about when to transition. Go ahead, yeah. Again, the different levels from the Department of Health. And this is our table that shows the percentage of students that we've been able to be serving in person. And currently in March, we're 80 to 85% of our students. And those that are not being served in person are not being served because of their choice to stay in remote learning. On March 12th, Governor Inslee made an announcement with some timelines and dates. The specifics of that announcement are on this slide. We have already met all the guidelines and expectations from Governor Inslee, so that announcement really didn't affect what we are doing in Camas. Throughout this, we've tried to keep an updated research, kind of annotated bibliography. And each time, kind of quarterly, I've tried to provide a summary of what the research is saying. And so this just shows what the summer highlights were, the fall research highlights were. And now we're into this winter, happy spring, right? We've moved into spring. And so I wanted to just give you an overview of what is coming out in the literature in the winter here. The big one is really just, the first is affirmation of the countermeasures in school, that they are effective in reducing transmission rates. And we can speak to that based on our own experiences here in Camas, that we certainly are seeing cases of COVID and quarantines and contact tracing, but the transmission is not occurring on our school sites. So that's, that's great. The second area we've heard from public comment tonight, near discussion as well in previous meetings, that the research is showing that the possibility of reducing six feet as the standard distancing requirement isn't necessary, that really the transmission rates at the six-foot level and the three-foot level are very similar. And so that is news that gives us greater capacity to serve in person. When I put this together, it was prior to the CDC update. So you see that that's highlighted a little different and linked here, that they did come out with updated guidance. And our own Department of Health is reviewing that guidance and expected maybe as soon as tomorrow to, to give some sort of statement about what we're going to be doing in Washington based on this. I just wanted to walk through some of the updated guidance. What I've heard through this process is the headlines grab all the attention, but the details are really important as you try to figure out how to implement the headline. And so the headline was six feet to three feet. And so what does that mean? In our elementary schools, it is three feet apart. And they're looking at, you know, just continuing the research around the transmissions at the younger levels aren't, don't seem to be as frequent as with adults and adolescents. They do call out separately, middle school and high school, and they call out the transmission level in the community. A couple of meetings ago, you may recall that I pulled the CDC guidance and showed you how they track by county. You can go to the website and see what transmission level we're at, and I'll show that with you in a future slide here. They also talk about that even though it's three feet, there are situations that you have to keep the six feet of distance. And so with adults, adults, adults should always be six foot, and adult with students should be six feet as well. So what does that look like? What does that mean? It's what we're doing right now, so we would just continue that practice. But the students could be seated closer in these scenarios that they're presenting. Doesn't say anything about lessening the mask restrictions or anything like that. And it also talks about in these activities where you're singing, shouting, running around, those kinds of things that it should maintain those six feet of distance and always suggesting outside instead of inside if possible. The other challenge with that six foot is it talks about common spaces. And so if you picture, I could imagine you can picture Camas High School during passing time and all the students, we have to try to figure out how do we maintain the six feet. Right now, it's pretty easy because of the cohort model that we have, you know, roughly, you know, 40, 45% of the students on site. But if we had 80% of the students on site, then that would be a little more challenging. We'd need to work through some of those logistics. They also talk about cohorting as a really important model. And we've talked extensively here about the ability to cohort in elementary school versus the ability to cohort in secondary, where kids are not with the same teacher all day. And so there are some logistics that we would need to work through on this one as well. This is what cohorting says per CDC, and I wish it had some like magic answer, but it doesn't. And it's really guidance that you have to work through. So I am very curious at what our own State Department of Health says about this and if they have any recommendations. Some other updates, just about visitors, transportation. We reviewed this guidance, and it's not anything different than what we're currently doing in our, in our transportation system. So that's good. And so what do we do about this? This release happens on Friday. Here we are on Monday, lots of comments and energy around it. I mentioned to you the, the CDC level of community transmission. We are currently in the substantial category, and that, that was updated Saturday through Friday. So we'll see if that changes here as we end this week. So we would be able to put in the three-foot guidance if our state supported that and you supported that. We need to look at capacity again, just that we've, we've established the six-foot capacity. Does it mean that we double? I don't know. We'd have to look at those rooms and just make sure. In particular, the rooms that have fixed furniture are a little more challenging than just a big open space where we can move things around and, and make sure that we hit those benchmarks. The other piece is the, like I talked about, the passing period, the lunches, those kinds of things that we would need to work through. So we're going to pay attention to those, you know. I'm hearing rumor mill that maybe there's announcements tomorrow. That means that we got to get to work and see what comes next and present some options for you guys. So some other factors that are around the next steps are the vaccination. Those have been going really well. Once the president and the governor moved educators into a status that could say to access the vaccinations, our staff have been doing great, and there's been a ton of options, options for them, thanks to the public health providers and partners here in Clark County. It's been fantastic. And then the other factor is just continued community behaviors. If the transmissions aren't happening at school, but they are happening in the community, it sure exhausts our resources in trying to track it down and making sure that everybody's safe. So we can use people's help with that. So just current status, when I was on the Clark County Public Health Call, they said we were right around 90 again this week. So we've definitely kind of started to flatten out after seeing some dramatic drops in February. This week was a big benchmark for us with four full days at the elementary level. Today was the first day of that, lots of energies in, in the school. And Mr. Hood's going to share some images and a short video with you today. And we are still running six, 12 hybrid and still have the full remote learning option. The, the conversation has been, and tonight, again in public comment, what about the increased stays for six to 12? And really just going to work through whatever guidance comes out in your directions and move forward on this. And I'm, I'm grateful that these announcements are happening now because when you think about next year, I mean, we're going to learn a lot over the next couple of months. We've learned a lot the last several months as we've done these transitions. And, you know, it's been a chaotic year for everyone. And I would really like to have a set for going into the fall where parents really know what to expect, staff knows what to expect, and they're not expected to transition five or six times in a year. Students know what to expect. I think that's going to be a real win, even if it continues to be a little chaotic here in the spring as we work through this. So I'm going to keep going through some of the other sections, the countermeasures. We, we have the vaccinations that I mentioned already are going well. And then we are piloting a testing program where we can get COVID-19 tests here on site. And so we're moving forward with that. We're hoping that before spring break, we'd have the screening option for staff. So if they want to get tested, they could do that on site. And then after spring break, we're hoping that we, in addition to having that staff screening, we'd also have diagnostic testing available for students and/or staff if they have symptoms. The surveys, go ahead, Gil, it'll start to try to play, so keep clicking. I don't want to play just yet. These are the questions that we've been asking staff. And just to give you a, a number of, we have about a thousand staff members. So we're getting decent return, this last one almost fifty percent. And so that, that helps you calibrate when you see the, the graphs of the number of staff that are weighing in on this. And I packaged it a little different this time because now we have four sets of data to just really try to help you. You know, we want blue and yellow really to be yellow to go down and a lot of blue. And the blues are the ones that are rating practices at a three or four level. And so just you can see visually where we're at with this. And then thinking about this last one was the highest number of staff that responded. So I think we're making good progress. Go ahead, Gil. This is the physical distancing standard. You can see that the one that concerns me on this is that our staff, rating of staff is the reds are kind of big. And so we really need to work on that, like how are we interacting with each other? You can see us in our room today. Yeah, so you can see we're all physical distance, right? And those are the practices that we need to have in place, not just in the classroom, but in the workspace, like in our offices here. In our mechanic shop, wherever it might be. Go ahead, Gil. Masking is the next one. Students and staff and then cleaning and disinfection. And then the final one is HVAC. Lots of unknowns still in HVAC. And, but the good thing on this is you can see the red is really getting small. So some people are really paying attention to HVAC and we want to give them all that information about our return rates and all that, and all that important stuff. And then there's a group that really just is unsure about how the HVAC works. And so we want to make sure if they have questions, that they can access them. But we're kind of discovering that those questions are, are not coming in at the same frequency. So one other thing is we, we continue to need the public's help. People have asked about volunteering and really even in the CDC guidance, they talk about volunteers and guests and things to the school that you want to limit. If you're interested in helping us, sign up for some substitute position. Because when we quarantine, we don't have enough staff. And because we aren't as efficient as we could be because of the way we're spacing out, we could need help. So there's information on our website. If you're interested in being a part of a dream team like this one is, sign up and we'll get you hooked up. So Mr. Hood's going to be coming on, so we're going to turn the audio on in here.
Alrighty, so hopefully my audio is working. Yes, okay, excellent. So I, I don't think the pictures today do justice. If you want to go back for a second, Gil, or whoever's, whoever's running the picture slide here. This, this is the pre-March 22nd, right? And teachers just, you know, doing great work and having to move rooms and do all these shuffles. Jeff had referred to, you know, furniture and, and built-in furniture. And, you know, at, at elementary, we faced those as well. And so the, the picture on the right is a, a storage unit that we, we rented to put a bunch of furniture in. So we make sure that we could get our students in. And, you know, these are just kind of the measures that we took because we knew getting our students in four days a week was more important than our furniture. And so we, we moved it and, and, and put it into the spot that it needed to be for right now. That doesn't mean we don't have furniture in our classrooms because we do. But we definitely rethought what a classroom needed to look like to make sure that we got our students in. If you want to go to the next slide. So this, this is actually from today, you know, March 22nd finally arrived. We've been talking about it, we've been planning, we've been just doing some, some really hard work around it just to make sure we were getting this right for our students and our families and our staff. And today it finally came. And so I was blessed enough to get to, to all the buildings today and just feel the energy. More than once, it was either adult or student saying, gosh, today felt really good. It felt like it was an awesome day because I got to see all of my class. And teachers were saying that, principals were saying that, students. One student, we were talking about Mondays being kind of rough sometimes. Mondays aren't the easiest. And this fourth grade student said, yeah, but today was a great Monday because I got to see the other half of my classroom, meaning it's the students. So it was, it was awesome. And this next video is a, a student, a second grade student at Dorothy Fox. And we were sent this, Dr. Snow and myself and some others were sent this by Mrs. Chase at Dorothy Fox. And, and I've, I've probably viewed it 10 times. And I just said, this video has to go on tonight. This sums it up. We have Chris Bromfield saying exactly what everybody's, is feeling. So Gil, if you want to play that video or Jeff.
Okay, so it's been a rough. It's been a rough time this year and last year when COVID hit. And I'm going to be super excited to come back four days a week because it's way better than nothing. Like if I had a chance to do anything when COVID hit, it would be come back to school four days a week. And then the thing that I'm super excited about, I'll get to see my friends and not just online, like none of that. Just four days a week and it all starts on Monday. I'm so excited. We won't have to do Zoom anymore, or except on Wednesday. But other than that, I'm super excited because last year and this year have been a rough time for me. And it's been rough for everybody. So yeah, I'm very excited. Bye.
So, you know, again, th- this is why we do the hard work and the hard lifts. And, and, and moving to four days was definitely hard. And I just want to thank the principals, the teachers, the classified staff, transportation. I mean, everybody just dug in and, and did the work that it took to, to get us to this point. And so thanks to everybody for, for leading this work.
Okay, so now it's time for the secondary update. And looking back at our last couple of weeks, we had a social gathering that impacted our community. And we had a bit of an outbreak in the community. And so we had to do the soft close of Canvas High School to implement all of our contact tracing protocols. The cohort A was able to attend two days on that first week. And then we started doing our work once we were notified on March, March 10th, Wednesday, March 10th. So we worked with the Clark County Public Health Department and our nurses, our administration team. Who did a phenomenal job just trying to identify all of the close contacts and, and people involved, get them notified, making sure they were quarantining and following the guidance. And we were, we implemented a pause, but we were able to return back to in-person learning. We started with the small groups last Wednesday. And cohort B was finally able to come on campus. And so we have continued with our mitigation strategies. And so far, as you can see there on the slide, we have nineteen confirmed out of the fifty close contacts. And so we were getting back confirmed negative tests, which was great. And again, our team has just done a phenomenal job. And as you saw Jake getting awarded earlier, I mean, it, it just takes a lot of effort getting information from all the members of the community. And just making sure that, you know, all the loops have been closed. And so the team has done a, a phenomenal job with that, with that work. So we're glad that we're back in school. Next slide. So here we are with our secondary in-person learning. So right now at middle school, we have about seventy-eight percent of our students reporting to in-person learning. But we just learned that this week we have a bit of an increase because with the trimester change, we had about fifty more families who say they want to come to in-person learning. So they, they're starting their first week this week. So we're excited about more students coming on campus and welcoming them. And then you see our high school numbers here, we have about seventy-one percent who are in person and twenty-nine percent who are remote. So we're just glad that we finally have all of our secondary students on, on campus doing in-person learning who want to. And we'll just continue to follow the guidance that we've been given. And thank you again for helping us get our students back to school. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams and Doug and Jeff for those updates. We didn't have any questions, so we will move on to item number nine, reports, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Tracy. Go ahead, Gil. So first of all, the state assessments, these are the annual assessments that are given at different grade levels. And I've been giving you an update on this. Washington State applied for the waiver this, I believe it's tomorrow. And the public comment on their waiver plan is in process right now. And so we'll know more about what the state assessments will look like later this spring, hopefully soon. You mentioned earlier the CEF auction, Tracy and Doug, fantastic job. It was fun watching you guys co-host the theme of a cruise, right? And you both had your costumes on and did such a nice job. And just a huge shout out to the CEF team. Like everybody's had to think differently about what, what our usual normal routines look like. And that includes CEF. And last year, when COVID hit, it was like two weeks maybe before the, the annual auction. And so they had to cancel it. And this year they came up with a great idea and did a fantastic job of just again, one, obviously raising funds for, for our kids and families and staff. But also highlighting, they always have a, a, a part of the agenda where they recognize extraordinary staff and community members who are living. It's demonstrating the vision of, of Canvas School District. So wonderful, wonderful event. And you also did a great job of mentioning the legislative update. So I've been kind of annoying to our local elected officials, I think, just they're, they're awesome and they understand it. And they also aren't the only decision makers. So really trying to provide them with the information that they need to consider providing some state stabilization because of the differentiated way the S R federal funds have been released to districts. And I think Jason will have a little more information on that in his budget report tonight. I am going to testify on behalf of the district to the Senate budget, I think is released maybe Friday or Saturday. So I'm going to try to make sure I get on that and really articulate what, what the impact would be if they don't choose to follow through with state stabilization fund. And then had, have a phone conversation scheduled with all of, of our locals. Talked with Representative Hoff today, he always asks great questions. So really appreciate them. And like Erica said, they are doing a town hall this evening. I also just took a couple of screenshots of some of our updated advocacy work that comes through Wassa. And the, the good news is that the economic forecast for the state is, is fantastic, a lot greater than people expected when we were starting with the first forecaster after the pandemic in the summer. And a lot of just real doom and gloom about the kind of revenue that the state would be able to accrue. And these slides just indicate that we're actually kind of back on track to what was projected pre-pandemic. And so that combined with the federal funds that are flowing into the state, it's not that there's a shortage of money. It's just the way it's been pushed out. And hoping for some flexibility about how they think about that when they look across the two hundred and ninety-five districts and see a huge discrepancy between some districts that receive a lot of federal funding and some that do not receive any. So I think, is there any more slides on that one, Gil? Nope, that's it. So I think I'll, I'll invite Dr. Williams back in to talk a little about math pathways.
Great, so I've been receiving some calls and, and some emails about our math pathways work now that we are in the second year.
Second, we need to get the audio on here going and I'll give you the thumbs up when I think it's ready.
Okay. All right, we're ready, we're good. Okay, so I've been receiving some calls from parents, just curious about our math pathways work and what's happening in our classrooms. So math is a little different in middle schools this year. Last year we went to sixth grade math for all students. And this year we are implementing our seventh and eighth grade math classes in a different model and format. So I just wanted to go back and remind people a little bit about the outcomes of the study and some of the rationale for the moves that we've made. Number one being the power of heterogeneous grouping, just knowing that when we have a healthy, diverse learning environment, it's, it's better for students from all levels of learning. And so not only does this model address the heterogeneity that is needed, but we are, with our new design, we are able to take students through classes like Math Seven and Math Eight at a deeper level. Because now we've been able to extend those courses, which you'll see in just a moment. Ability grouping should be fluid and based on a particular standard. So we don't necessarily want to label the student and say, you know, you're, you're an A group student for math. And you, and another student is a B group student, perhaps they have to float back and forth depending on what the content is. Because sometimes I may be strong in solving systems of equation, but I might need a little bit more support when it comes to work with integers or something of that nature. Acceleration prior to seventh grade had, was not supported by the research. And acceleration beyond sixth grade may be appropriate as long as we don't skip or rush certain concepts. Again, that speaks to why we've designed a more extensive seventh and eighth grade math model for the seventh grade, for the seventh grade. And we also noted that we did, we wanted to eliminate lower level track math classes as well. So you'll notice like at, at hi, at the high school level, we don't offer things like pre-algebra. We really try to teach most students at grade level whenever possible. And so thi- this is the information from the math study that we conducted. We had over a hundred and thirty different community members who wanted to, to, to participate, excuse me, on that committee. We ended up selecting about thirty-three, thirty-five participants. And it was teachers and parents from multiple schools in the district, multiple levels, so that we could comb through this research. We worked with the University of Washington with Dr. Julia Aguirre. And we were able to just go through the research and identify these outcomes in terms of shaping our, our next moves as a system. So what does that look like? That's the next slide. So in middle school, like I mentioned earlier, at sixth grade, we offer Math Six. And this allows for teachers to focus on the standards at sixth grade and to go deep and to ensure that those concepts are not rushed. Because again, the research said that rushing students at this level, often we end up finding students have gaps or lack certain skills as they persist in math courses over time. And so at seventh grade, there are two options. You could take Math Seven, or you can take Math Seven and elective Math Eight as an acceleration pathway. Where, you know, it's, it's accessible to all students. We removed the testing barrier. So any student who is interested and able to take that elective Math Eight class, it's open to them. And so it's opened up the capacity to, to serve more students across. Instead of having Math and Seven, Math Seven and Math A offered in one class period over the course of the year, we split it into two. You get more opportunities to cover content at a deeper level. So what does that mean for eighth grade? So at eighth grade, if you've taken Math Seven, you go to Math Eight. It's pretty straightforward. But if you've done the accelerated pathway, you can go into Algebra One. And this summer we'll have opportunities for eighth graders, should they wish to, they could take Algebra One if they weren't able to take it their eighth grade year. And then they were in Algebra one for eighth grade, they could take Geometry over summer. Next slide. So then, some of the concern is, will my student be able to get to calculus if all sixth graders are in sixth grade math? Or with the way the Math seven is structured as it currently stands? And the answer is yes, absolutely. And so if you follow the the light blue highlights, Algebra one, Geometry, Algebra two, this gets you into college and it satisfies most requirements based on students who want to pursue pretty much any post-secondary type of opportunity. And then if you want an accelerated route because of your interest in in the schools you are trying to get into, you have the Geometry, Algebra two, Accelerated Pre-Calculus, and then Calc BC. So again, with our current middle school model, you still have the opportunity for students to get get to calculus for those who are concerned about that with the model. So those are, I believe, some of the the key ideas that were of concern to families, people worried about, you know, it will my child get a rich experience in mathematics in middle school? The answer is yes. Will they be able to get to calculus in high school? The answer is yes. And we just ask that, you know, parents stay engaged with their administrator and counselors, just making sure that they get signed up for what they need. Any questions? Oh, one, one other thing I want to, we do have a spring meeting where we continue to review the impact of our program. We look at grades, we look at whether or not student, how students are doing, and we, you know, continue to monitor and and adjust accordingly. So any questions? Yes, come.
I have a quick question. Back a few slides, there was a mention of summer opportunities for summer opportunities for Algebra one and Geometry. Are those new?
Yeah, yes, they're new, because we did not offer them the last couple summers. Yeah. They may have been offered before, you know, but, you know, I know for the last couple years, we didn't have them.
After explaining these pathways to families that have been coming to you, what have the follow-up questions been after they see and understand the offering?
I believe some parents still want another option at at sixth grade, which, you know, again, with a year and a half or so of committee work, we're not at the point of changing sixth grade at this point. The other ask parents have is instead of splitting the two into seventh grade and the eighth grade like we've done, couldn't we go back to like it was? And then we just try to talk through the research, we talk through access, we talk through, you know, just all the rationale. And, you know, that's why we have seventh and eighth as it is. Yeah, those are the primary. And then the conversation kind of shifts to access to the Magnet Program or access to calculus and applying for colleges.
I have one more question. So the first, when will we be able to measure how many years till this cohort goes through where we can compare the data from high school students, what level of math they're taking, and when this cohort gets there to measure the impact of this on their higher level math placements or course taking?
So that that's a great question. And so we're in about year two for that first cohort. So they'll be in high school in about two more years. And we should be able to see how they arrive at either of our high schools. And if they're, you know, what math class they're in, what their readiness level is, if they are, if they're going to persist. And we're currently just monitoring right now enrollment patterns, you know, who's enrolling in the courses now that we've kind of opened the door and that we're offering offering math this way.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And I don't think we have any other questions. So next, we will move on to the monthly monthly budget report, and Jason's going to give that to us.
Okay, how's the audio? Audio? Okay, we're good. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and hit the next slide, please, Gil. Yeah, so this evening, I want to give you a budget status report, talk a little bit about SIR funds, which is the federal COVID relief. I'll give you another enrollment update, kind of give you status there. And since the board was busy with your executive sessions and you were not present at the budget committee, I wanted to give you an update on some of those discussions. So and I'll pause at the very end. The audio has to switch back and forth. So I'll probably wait until the very end for questions. But if you need me to stop, please raise your hand and I'll I'll pause. All right, go ahead, please. So for February of this this school year, we're getting as you'll probably hear kind of a broken record in that our revenues are down and so are expenditures, right? So that obviously is still the case. What I had mentioned kind of previously in previous budget status reports is that I expected our deficit might start to increase, and that is indeed coming to fruition. Like, you know, a month ago, it was trending towards three and a half million dollar deficit. That's crept up to about four point two million now. We'll continue to monitor that. And there's still some things that need to play out before the end of this year, one of which 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 I'll talk later is really the legislative session. And we have, we have to kind of see how that shakes out. So the other funds, capital projects, debt service, transportation vehicle funds, that's all normal activity for this time of the year. With the exception of ASB, obviously, with the COVID closure, there's very limited activity going in and out of that fund. So a next slide, please. So this is in the general fund, providing you kind of trying to provide some consistent graphs for you as a as a school board to cut. So you kind of start to see the the trends for yourself, just as in the most as in previous months. There's a slide on revenues, that's this slide that talks about current year-to-date revenues, revenues by source, and then it kind of gives you that sense of are we better or worse than where we than this time last year? And so as you can kind of see with the bar graph, we're slightly below the previous two years. Next slide. On the expenditure side, as I had mentioned before, we're below our budget there. So again, you kind of see the the bar graph flattening out there, and and that's just a reflection of of this year and kind of the the result of the COVID closures. Next slide, please. I know this is terribly tiny, and if I could hone the mouse, I would hover it over kind of that gray box on the left-hand side that it kind of has total revenues and total expenditures. And right there, that difference, whereas the deficit of four point two million that I had mentioned before. So those are the projected numbers that we're trying to pay close attention to for our revenues and expenditures. And that's kind of where things are shaking out right now. Again, we have, we have a road to go before that will really finalize here with the legislature. Next slide, please. Okay, next slide. Okay, so in SIR, the federal COVID relief monies, we've, we're getting three different installments. So one, we already received, and we actually received that last fiscal year. That was the initial three hundred thousand. Then we were awarded another seven hundred thousand in round two. And we've been holding on that to kind of see what the state COVID relief is going to look like. In that package, we we have to wait until the end of the session, which is intended to or scheduled to end, I think, April twenty fifth. So and now there's a third installment. Round three of federal SIR funds that we're anticipating will receive about one point five million dollars. So when you add that all together and divide it by our number of students, you can see CAMUS will get about three hundred and seventy dollars per student. Whereas at the other end of the scale, Vancouver, with a higher frame reduced population, will receive almost thirty four hundred dollars per student. So this is that disparity. We've talked about it before, I kind of, you know, but it just continues through all three different phases of SIR relief funds from the federal government. So that's our push. And this, this is our pitch to to our state legislators to please help districts like CAMUS and and some of our neighbors as well. You know, it's, it's, it's not fair for Hawkinson, right? To 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 get a fraction of what the Vancouver students are receiving. So and same with La Center and Richfield and what have you. So you could please hit the next slide. This gives you a little bit different view of it, and it can be kind of tough to read, but CAMUS is close to the top of the list. We're not, which normally you want to be at the top of the list. This is not one you want to be at the top. It's much better to be at the bottom financially. And this is where Longview really kind of exceed, exceed, excelled in this area, if you will. The SIR relief funds, they're getting over forty six hundred dollars per student, whereas, again, we're back at the at the three hundred and sixty nine dollars. So just another way of presenting the same disparity in federal relief funds. Next slide, please. The other thing that we're keeping an eye on is enrollment, because that is our single biggest driver for funding, right? So we keep tracking it for this year and how and and how things are going. We've been losing, it's been stabilizing, but we're still losing a few kids, you know, net net loss of kids each month. I will say, you know, we've got some bright spots out there. Penguins are holding strong, the Foxes out there are holding strong, and Renegades, we see we were growing in there. So those three schools are, you know, showing some strong signs. So it's good. There's some good signs, and this is leveling out. But still, we want, we want to be back up at the red line. So that's really what we forecast, is where we want it to be. And looking ahead to next year, I think we're going to build a budget that's modeling right in between that blue and red line. And again, that's that's for financial budgeting purposes. From an operational standpoint, we want all the families back, right? We want to serve every single family that is in our community. And we want to go past that red line. So it's two different things. One, I have, we have to budget financially. But operationally, obviously, we want to, we want to exceed the community's expectation. So our next slide, please. Thank you. So Budget Committee update. We talked, Jeff had given a nice update about where we're at with reopening. And we talked about legislative update as well as kind of what are those levers? What are those unknown things? We, when we say we have to wait for the legislature, what does that look like? And what are those financial impacts? And so we really, really tried to kind of dive into those things. And it was a really good discussion. You know, it's kind of like kind of like a basketball team at the end of the season, they're humming along, like, that's where we're at with the Budget Committee, like all the, we're firing all on all cylinders. And the dialogue has been really good. So on the legislative update side, kind of in in summary, and Jeff has mentioned this, really, the legislature either addresses issues with individual bills and or the final budget. Basically, what started as bills at the beginning of the session are now getting kind of moved into the state's operating budget process. So kind of the enrollment stabilization is happening that way, as well as the transportation stabilization. We're expecting that bill to basically get incorporated into the state budget. We mentioned House Bill twelve sixty six. We're still kind of hoping that it's it's got some we're hoping that it doesn't die, just because it has that possible bill amendment where it would pause our loss of regionalization funding. So if that's the case, that would be great. That could give us a couple of years, allow them to kind of rebase that, that that funding model factor. So we'll keep monitoring that. Next slide, please. So and Jeff stole the thunder there on the state budget. It looks really good. You know, hard to believe, you know, twelve months ago, they were talking about a nine billion dollar deficit, or no, ten months ago, and now we're you know, that's a race. So huge swing for the state of Washington. Then on top of it, they got another four point three billion dollars on top of that to where the state you know, has to budget this year. And so really, honestly, that's, that's one of the big things that's going to potentially you know, delay them getting a budget finalized is kind of this influx of federal monies is making their job a little challenging, because what the legislature wants to do is to make sure that the state is the last, is the payer of last resort, meaning if you receive federal monies, that needs to go towards towards the COVID relief, you know, all, you know, your PPE costs and all the impacts and what have you. Then they would like to use state dollars secondary to that. So so they're linked together. And that seems to be a pretty common thread that we're hearing. And 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 we understand that, but it's just going to take a while to figure out some of those mechanics. Because federal money, as we've mentioned before, comes in, comes into the state in in one manner, really following kind of free and reduced populations or poverty levels, whereas state has many other different funding mechanisms that don't follow that same thing. Right now, as of the end of last week, there was about four hundred bills of the fourteen hundred that were that were still alive. The next cutoff here is coming up later this week, I think, March twenty six. So all said, we just won't know you know, what our financial future really is until the end of the session, which is supposed to be end of April. So we had about a month. Next slide, please. So all of that taken kind of rolls up into kind of a four-year outlook. And this was really what we talked about with the Budget Committee. It was huge. Because when when we're doing our four-year budget, it's really just high level. What's our total revenues? What's our total expenditures? How much fund balance do we have left? And then we talked about these different things like enrollment stabilization. What could that mean for us? Well, it could mean maybe three point four million dollars, or it could mean two million dollars, right? It's, it really depends upon what the legislature does. And we talked about kind of, okay, they could plug in like SIR three monies. And what happens if you plug in that one point five million next year? What, you know, what happens? And so we really went through that process, and it was good. But things are happening. You know, we went through this whole effort, spent tons of hours putting it together. The meeting starts at five thirty. At four fifty seven PM, we get information that it was already outdated, like there was the state released the CPI percentage, and it went from one point six percent to two point two percent. So anyways, that that it's just kind of where we're at right now. We're, we keep refining the budget tool, keep unsharpening the pencil. As we know more information, we added in there. But overall, the budget, the the committee was really honing in on our operational model shows and expenditure growth, it's at a higher pace than our revenue. shows and expenditure growth that's at a higher pace than our revenue. And this, under the new funding formula, our revenue trend starts to flatten out. And that's a tough thing in a district that's been growing for so many years. This is us saving electricity. That's why that light went out. I'll make some. But so so this is something that, you know, Camus is going to have to ultimately come to terms with, right? We've got to, we've got to figure this thing out. But we have a runway and that runway, you know, comes in the form of fund balance, gives us a little, some time. Hopefully, a robust COVID relief package from the state would be really nice, right? To help fill that gap from the federal S R dollars. So if we get those two things, you know, kind of, and and we can kind of leverage those one time resources that gives us a runway to kind of move our operations into a longer term, sustainable path that align more closely with our revenue. Or successfully advocate for a funding funding model change at the state level, right? So one or both, all of them could potentially work. And that's ten, that tends to be where we find solutions, right? It's, it's, it's small, small victories in certain areas that collectively culminate to that pathway forward that we find. So and this is just like every year, we we have to wait for information before we can really finalize some of these decisions. So we're going to continue that refinement. It is frustrating sometimes. You know, because we want to, we want to set that pathway forward, but we just have to be a little patient this year. It's a longer session. So we'll find out more here soon. So I'll pause, I'm done there. Any, any questions?
Can you go? Can you go back to that slide where that little teeny gray box was? And can you say one more time while we're looking at that little gray? And is there any way to stretch that? Can you say again, one more time, what you're keeping your eye on with that little gray box?
All right, is the audio okay? Okay. So that gray box, that's the culmination. So many of these other reports that you're seeing are year to date revenues and expenditures. That gray box takes that trend so far this year and then projects for the year end. So it's saying right now, we're projecting total revenues of about ninety seven point seven million. However, our expenditures are looking close to one hundred and two million. So that, that difference is that four point two million dollar deficit that I mentioned, where we were kind of trending up. That's what we need to pay attention to as a district. Because what that, what that does is that just reduces our available fund balance for the future, right? So and and we're already looking at probably needing to to use a portion of fund balance next year. Unless we get some pretty robust COVID relief. So, you know, again, that's one of those factors. We have to kind of wait and see what the legislature does, so. I apologize for the small font.
Second question. I saw that the USDA has offered to extend the summer meals to children. How does that affect, and your lights just went back on. And how does that affect us here in Camas?
So we've been operating effectively under that waiver during this entire pandemic. So what the waiver does is it allows us to serve meals free of cost to all students. And and so they're extending that waiver through September. So it does two things. It allows us to continue to provide some level of service through the summer, right? And provide meals at that, at, at some level, right? Which we were probably going to do anyways because we're besting in in learning recovery, right? We want a robust summer program. Part of that is 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 making sure that we're, we're meeting that that food need of students. So it it'll help financially. It'll make it basically more affordable to provide that service. Second thing it's going to do is with it going through the end of September, it helps soften that transition for for parents, right? Because it's always a rush, beginning of the year, I have all my paperwork in. Do I qualify? Has my application been reviewed? And and so this gives kind of a runway for families to 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 get some of that squared away and and still not worry about receiving meal assistance during that time. So that's, that's, that's basically what it'll mean for Camas School District. They've keep extending it. So, you know, that's always a possibility. It could go longer. We don't know. But at least now, it's, that's, that's a good runway for us to plan. I'm happy with that because last, this time last year, we didn't, we didn't get the same runway. So it's going to definitely help us plan.
I just really quick, could we go back to slide seventy two? Too forward. I just wanted to pause on this slide really quick in case anybody wanted to take a screenshot of it. Because that's what we're dealing with right now. And maybe slide seventy three as well. And this is why we're talking so much about contacting our legislators to help with, with the fix on this. Because this combined with our possible reduction in regionalization, which we knew was coming, is just not setting us up for success in the way that we are used to and accustomed to. So I just wanted to, just wanted to editorialize for just a bit there. I'm done now.
Thank you, Corey. That's a good point. Is there any other questions? Jason, was that it or were you done with after that? Yes, yes. Okay, thank you, Jason. We appreciate your report and the good questions. Thank you, guys. Okay, we will move on to item number ten on our agenda, open and effective communications. This is, we have a board resolution twenty oh eight, an emergency waiver of high school graduation credits.
Just, this is a resolution that last year we adopted as well. You adopted, the state board put in flexibility around graduation pathways as a direct result of the pandemic. So just acknowledging that because of the pandemic, some students may need greater flexibility with the twenty four credit graduation requirements and how they get there. And so this resolution allows our staff to work with students in extenuating circumstances to ensure that they, one, meet, meet the spirit of the graduation requirements, but two, do that in a flexible way if there's circumstances beyond their control.
Great, thank you, Jeff. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, that was a, I'll take a motion from Connie and a second from Erica. Is there any discussion? Okay, I will do a roll call vote. Connie?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Erica?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
And I also vote aye. Next, we will move on to item number eleven, strong community, family and business partnerships. Camas School District teams up with Clark P U D for exterior, exterior light upgrade projects.
In your board packet, you'll see that this is an information only, no action required. It's just another opportunity to partner with Clark Clary Public Utilities. And I think that Jessica Beaner is here. If there are any questions that you guys have for her related to this. And you're welcome to either ask those questions this evening or also follow up with Jessica later if you're more interested in it.
That is amazing. Thank you. That's great. And thank you, Clark P U D, for those partnerships. We appreciate that and the money that we'll get to do those projects.
And I just want to let the guests at home know, it doesn't look like we're picking up Doug Quinn's mic. So he was just complimenting staff on this partnership opportunity through two projects that are going to be using funding through Clark P U D to enhance our services, so.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'll also note that Doug is sporting his Clark P U D sweater today. So he's really supporting P U D. Okay, next, we will move on to item number twelve, quality facilities and resources. We have the Camas High School Carpet Project as complete. I'll entertain a motion for that one from the board.
I'll make a motion to accept the final Camas High School Carpet Project.
And I'll second.
Okay, that was a first from Erica and a second, I'll take Corey. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote Connie.
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Erica?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
And I also vote aye. So that brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. We are now going to go into executive session to discuss personnel where we may possibly have action and will be about forty five minutes, I would assume.
Thank you, Jeff, and I'll also note that Doug is sporting his Clark PUD sweater today. So he's really supporting PUD. Okay, next we will move on to item number 12, quality facilities and resources. We have the Camas High School carpet project as complete.
Okay, welcome back. We're sorry fixing our I am on there. You're good. Okay. All right. We were just clarifying our sound in here. So welcome back. It's 8:02. We have finished our executive session and I am now going to open the board up for some discussion.
All right. I guess I can go ahead and get things started here. So well, over the course of the last couple of weeks, we've been, you know, entering into a lot of intense conversations with staff and community students even all stakeholders. And, you know, kind of weighing our options about where to go. With this most important job, this is I've been telling people this is this is job number one of us as board members, right? Is appointing appointing and overseeing a superintendent. And so it's definitely not something that we take lightly. And so I know for for me, feeling like how late in the year we are. And and the gravity of this situation, I know for me, I'm feeling like an interim superintendent for this next school year to start on July 1 when Dr. Snell leaves us. And then going out for a full search for a permanent superintendent to start in July 1 of 2022. I think is the for me is the most responsible way to go in terms of an open and transparent process. And in terms of making sure that we don't rush this important decision that we thoroughly vet all of our candidates. And and make sure that we're positioning the district and the community for long term success with somebody who has the has has gone through the process and has the backing and the support of so many other stakeholders in our community. So.
Yeah, it, you know, this this whole exercise has slowed down to a really, I think, a really thoughtful, measured conversation. I know that I've I've I see the value in us dealing with an interim and not trying to rush forward. I feel like our community would value the transparency. I feel like we have well qualified candidates in the district, but I also don't want to undermine their chance of succeeding because we've pushed, we've pushed the community to a point of like, I don't understand what were they, you know, how have they done this? So that idea of buying some time, bringing in an interim makes sense. I think it's reasonable. It gives us the ability to to get out in front on the right schedule where the superintendents that are doing movement around the country are available. It gives the staff that are here that have expressed interest a chance to demonstrate kind of that leadership because it'll be really intense. And I, you know, I love the idea of having them show their stuff more more directly to us as well. And I think with an interim that they can do that, they can step through and be available to that that level of performance. And for that reason, it makes sense to support movement towards you know, this interim to long term, we need help. We need help from outside, you know, our the walls of our building. And in so doing, I think that using a consulting service to assist us getting to the point where we either either use them on a interim. Definitely need we need them for any sort of a long term thing we would do. I think that makes really good sense. I would be willing to support that.
Think we're in that really unique position of we're still in a pandemic. We can't have big meetings, big interviews. We can't do the process that we would want to do to give this the the respect that it deserves for the number one job that we have, what Corey said. And so our timing, I think you're right on, Doug, is that our timing. It doesn't allow for that longer process of finding that candidate for a full time. I would support going with an interim as well. And I also believe getting help from professional service would be helpful in helping us to gather community feedback, staff and our stakeholders, our our community or in our city to gather all of that and help us in determining that next step.
So I would echo what you all have just said. And the only thing I would add to that is if we were to do a search right now, we would be looking at late May to make a decision and that's a tough time. If somebody recruited our superintendent and we found out in late May and need to do something really quickly, I think that that's that's an undue burden on other districts, I think, for it. It's not the it's not the ideal recruiting season, so to speak. And so I think to do an unrushed thorough, transparent process, I would agree that doing a full search next year and have an interim between now and then is the right direction to go.
Thank you, you guys for this great discussion today. I know this has been something that we've all been wrestling with even as soon as we knew that Jeff was applying for the Vancouver job. It's something that we've all been trying to figure out. Well, what's that mean for us? And we've been weighing that on our minds for a long time. And we want to do the right thing and make sure that we bring the community along in this decision. And we want to be transparent in everything that we're doing. So I think this discussion has been really good for us. And I think an interim, I think, is going to be our best solution for right now. And then doing the full search when we have more time to do that, so that we're able to do that properly and bring everyone along with us. So I think, is there any other discussion you guys want to have tonight? Okay, if there is no other discussion, then I can take a motion.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to enter into contract negotiations with McPherson and Jacobson for executive recruitment services.
Thank you, Corey. Do you have a second?
So does that mean that staff moving forward then are authorizing staff to move forward with developing a contract then for those services?
Yes.
Okay. I would second that.
Okay, thank you, Corey and Doug for that motion to move forward with contract for services from McPherson Jacobson. Um, is there any other discussion? All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Connie.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Erica.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That is the end of our regular scheduled meeting. It's 8:11. Thank you for joining us.